I call the Lancaster Central School District Board of Education meeting to order. In the unlikely event of an emergency, if we have to evacuate the room, please note the locations of the exits. At this time, I ask you to silence your cell phones and rise for the pledge of allegiance. Please remain standing for a moment of silent reflection. I pledge allegiance.
We are the United States of America, and through our collective work, we stand as one nation under God, in the resolve of the Constitution of America.
We remain standing this evening for Joanne Uller, a middle school math teacher from 1970 through 2000, who passed away on August 15, 2022. All right, Mr. Davenport is excused from the meeting this evening. We're going to move on to 4.0 presentations. 4.1, we have an audit presentation from Carl Widner and Charles Tatier from Drescher and Malachi LLC. I think we're going to go out in the audience.
Okay, so thank you. Thanks for having us present the results of the audit for the year ended June 30, 2022. I'm Charles Trottier. I'm the senior manager on the audit, and with me is Carl Widner, who's the partner on the audit for the year. So on the first slide there, that shows the products of the audit, what the district receives every year from the results of our audit. Number one, basic financial statements. This is the official 90-page document that shows the financial statements and how the district is doing for the year. So really just this year, all highlights to communicate with this group, the board here. There's three opinions that are on our letterhead that are since our property as auditors of the district. Everything else is the district's property. But the first opinion is on the financial statement themselves and that they can be fairly, they can be relied upon by the user of the financial statement. So unmodified opinion, clean opinion this year, and there are no material misstatements that were noted. So what that means is that we are hired as auditors to provide an unbiased opinion that these financial statements can be relied on by the users, whether it be the credit agencies, the banks, this group here, or the residents of the district, and these financial statements are free of misstatements. The second opinion is on internal controls as they relate to the data that's in those financial statements. So there are no significant deficiencies in internal controls to report on, and there are no material weaknesses to report on as well. The last opinion there that you will receive as far as the basic financial statements is on the uniform guidance. What that is, is an opinion that the federal spending, so the federal grants that the district receives, whether it be related to COVID relief, or special ed, or Title I, or all the other programs where the district receives federal funds, we come in and we do a compliance audit to make sure that those are free of compliance issues or question costs, what it's called. And once again, this year, there are no question costs to report on. So the district is in full compliance with federal awards. Management letters. From time to time, when we see some best practices or some internal control deficiencies that we want to communicate to the audit committee, we'll include those in a management letter. This year, we just spoke with the audit committee ahead of this meeting, and we were going to consider some best practices surrounding cybersecurity, but no formal controlled deficiencies to report on. Audit communications, those are the required communications that we go over with the audit committee. Next slide, I'll focus on just some highlights there, too. And then the fourth bullet is the extraclassroom activity report. As a school district running extraclassroom activity funds and student programs, those often tend to be a little risky here as far as students handling cash. So we come in and we do an audit of those funds in accordance with New York State. So New York State issues this guide to make sure that all of the funds follow the proper receipt and disbursement process. And once again, this year, clean opinion on the extraclassroom activity report. So highlights throughout. So on the next slide, auditor communications letter, auditor communications, that's what we just talked about with the audit committee. But some of the highlights there, significant accounting policies. Sometimes we're governed from time to time by the Governmental Accounting Standards Board to make sure that these financial statements look the way the oversight bodies want them to look like. And they issue these standards every now and then that cause a lot of work on behalf of the business office. And so over the last couple of years, there's been two new implementations that has caused a lot of additional work. So a great job by the district on implementing those to make sure that these financial statements are in compliance with the standards out there. And just independence, the fourth bullet there, just for the full board to know, we, myself, Carl, and all the members of the team that worked on the district are independent, in fact, in appearance with the district, which means that these financial statements as auditors, as third party, they're free of bias and they can be relied upon. So some financial highlights here. This shows a trend of the last five years of how revenues and expenditures have compared to one another. I see the goal is to maintain a perfect, perfect line between your revenues and your expenditures. In this case, you'll see the blue line represents the revenues in districts, and the red line represents the expenditures, which oversees $105 million worth of spending for 2021, 2022. So what you'll see there is, on a five-year average, the district has been able to follow a budget variance of about 2%, just under 2%, which means that every year, if you were to average it out, the spending and the revenues are really on par with one another. And so at the end of 2021, 2022, the district generated about $7 million of fund balance. And what, the main differences there with what happened in the prior year is sales tax, which increased by about $2 million, and some of the aid that was withheld from New York State in the form of about $3.2 million. So this unanticipated increase in revenues dictated how 2021, 2022 did. And what that does is, although you generated some fund balance there, by law, New York, by law, the district has to follow New York State real property tax law. And so only 4% of the excess can be maintained as unassigned fund balance. And once again, on the next slide, that's where you see the district is still in compliance with that 4% rule. So once again, 20, or 2019, 2020, you saw unassigned fund balance at higher levels, and that was because aid was withheld with COVID, and the district didn't know what was going to happen, whether the aid was going to be received or not. And so the aid, the district was transparent in showing unassigned fund balance over the 4% level for the first time in, as far as I've been here. And once again, for the last two years, the district has been compliant with that law that restricts school districts to maintain only 4%. All other fund balances you can see there, increase from last year, about $7 million, all went into that red portion, which is your restricted fund balance. Those are the legal reserves that the district is tied to, whether it be for capital projects, whether it be for employee benefits, whether it be for retirement contributions. So the red portion of the reserves did increase by $7 million. But what's available for use or emergencies in the form of unassigned fund balance, state level, and is in accordance with that 4% law. And any observations that we've noted throughout the audit, we've communicated to the audit committee prior. And all around, it's been a really good year. The district is in stable condition. And once again, unmodified opinion, no material weaknesses, no significant deficiencies to report on. Any questions? You're welcome.
All right, can I, 4.2, can I have a motion to accept the audit report? Does the audit committee have a recommendation?
Yes, after meeting with the audit committee earlier before the board meeting, I would go ahead and recommend that we accept the report.
Thank you, Mr. Tellerico. Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. On to 4.3, we've got a Board of Education recognition photo montage. Alana Alicia.
So being a board member is a thankless task most of the time, but here tonight, we are here with you to make sure that you get the thanks that you deserve. We know that you volunteer countless hours to help Lancaster be the best place to live and get an education. Andy and I could talk all night, but it comes better from our students, and quite frankly, they're a lot cuter than us. So we figured you'd want to see that more than us. Before I turn it over to our students, though, I do want to take a moment to recognize Alana Alicia, who is one of our high school students who made the artwork that you're going to be receiving tonight. So. So we're going to start with Alana, and she's going to, there's going to be a student who's presenting to each one of you. They're going to come up to you. So we'll start with Alana, so you can go ahead.
I love my school because it allows me to express myself creatively through the arts department.
Thank you. Yeah, of course. Next, presenting to Mr. Sage, we have Anya and Jislani.
You're welcome. The reason why I love school is learning.
The reason why I love my school is because all my teachers are so dedicated, and they're all always going to help me.
Thank you, guys. Next, we have Gianna, who's going to be presenting to Mr. Jackson.
Thank you. I love my school because of all the caring teachers and the fun clubs like PTO Club.
Next, we're going to bring up Luke, and Luke's going to be presenting to Mrs. Cohen.
I love my school because the teachers make my school fun.
Next, we'd like to bring up Annika. Annika's going to present to Mrs. Fletcher.
Thank you. I love my school because the teachers are really nice and friendly.
And last, we're going to bring up Clara, and Clara's going to present to Mr. Tellerico.
Thank you. I love my school because the teachers are really nice, and I like learning with all my friends.
On behalf of Karen and I, we would like to say thank you for all of our students and all the families that come out this evening and letting us, for all your children, to present these wonderful gifts to members of our Board of Education. So we would like to extend to all of you, on behalf of everyone here, a heartfelt thank you for all of the work and all of the support that you do for us and you do for the district on a continuous basis. But one last thing we want to do before we kick it on over is, we would like to thank the three art teachers that were absolutely instrumental in making tonight possible and helping us put these photos together. So first, I'd like to call over Anne Perry Smith, who is one of our high school art teachers. Yeah, there she is, right there. Thank you, Anne, one of our high school art teachers, also a director of the Department for Lancaster. Allison Dembski, Allison, stand up, come on over, say hi to everybody. And then Sydney Hiffrin, come on, come over as well and take a bow. The artwork that you guys received tonight was made possible because of the work that was done, done by our student, but also done in collaboration with these three wonderful ladies here. So ladies, thank you very so much for your support in making this reality. So thank you, thank you very much. And on behalf of Karen, myself, and everybody else here tonight, one last thank you for all that you do for the Lancaster school community. We really do appreciate it. Thank you all so much. You know, I say often that this is a really easy thing to volunteer for because of nights like this, when we get to see the kids present. So from each of us, thank you so much for coming out and doing this. Yeah, this is one of those, those, you know, thanks that feel so good. It makes your heart feel really good, and that's probably why we all do this. So again, thank you so much. And parents, thank you so much for bringing your children out tonight. I know that these nights can be long, so you are all free to take them home and enjoy the rest of the night. But, you know, for me, maybe ice cream might be something. All right, moving on to correspondence, 5.0. We have no correspondence to remark. 6.0, approval of minutes. 6.1, can I have a motion to approve the regular session minutes from September 12, 2022? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. 7.0, items from staff organizations. Anyone from the Lancaster Administrative and Supervisory Association?
Thank you for doing that, because for everyone, we're on local live as well, so otherwise they can't hear.
We just want to take the opportunity, on behalf of last, Mrs. Fletcher, Mr. Jackson, Mr. Sage, Mrs. Cohen, Mr. Tellerico, Mr. Uteck, Mr. Davenport, you know, tonight is about our children, but again, it's about board appreciation and all that you do for the Lancaster Central School District for all of us. So thank you so much for setting a fine example. Again, we appreciate your support and, again, enjoy tonight because we really appreciate all that you do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Cohen. And anyone from the Lancaster Central Teachers Association?
Good evening. Just a few things. One, we'd like to congratulate our students and our teachers who worked on the montage that you folks all received this evening. Secondly, we'd also like to, the LCTA would also like to continue to thank our custodial staff. As we are now a month into the school year, there's still a lot of work that's being done in the buildings. If it wasn't for our custodial staff, that would make our jobs a lot harder. So we'd like to continue to thank them. And lastly, the LCTA is taking part in the Making Strides Walk on October 22. As everybody knows, October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And I know I did this to you last year, I'm going to do it again, where I will send the board the link if you would like to make a donation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Abraham. Anyone from the Lancaster Association of Surface Personnel? And anyone from the Lancaster Association of Substitute Teachers? Moving on to 8.0, board reports. Do any board members have anything to report?
Yeah, just quickly, I think about sort of this past weekend, and I wanted to share with folks. I got to watch the football team on Friday, and that was a signature win, to watch those young men and women step up in a way to beat a team that frankly was a tough team. What was cool for me was it spoke volumes of this district in the leadership, and what all of you, many of you teachers and administrators and support staff that are creating an ecosystem of leadership to support our leaders of tomorrow, and for them to have that signature win. I then got to come here just before, watching our girls volleyball team, who is now ranked fourth in the state and first in Western New York, and the same goes there. So to watch our student athletes supported in every aspect of their lives, their whole selves, students first, and then in their athletic endeavors and everything else they do, is so important. So I just wanted to acknowledge that, which we probably don't do enough of, and thank each and every one of you for the effort you put in, because that's what it's about, and it shows the amount of success that this district in general is experiencing, and it's not lost on me. So thank you all for that.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Real quick, last week I had the ability to go to a K-3 open house, which was great. So it's obviously no surprise that over the last couple of years, that, weird to say the least, not normal for any, by any means. So it was nice to go back to the schools, see the teachers in their element, see parents, just see people back in the building. When people are in the building, parents, children, that sort of thing, it kind of brings a different type of energy, and it's nice to see that energy back and throughout all the buildings. So I appreciated it. It was a really nice night, and I really appreciate the teachers for, you know, taking time out of their night to meet with parents and kind of explain how the year is going to go. So I'm looking forward to another great school year. Thank you, Mr. Tellerico.
Not to be overdone. I had the opportunity this weekend to attend the Lancaster Level Read, which is our marching band competition, and watch the marching legends improve their score again this week with an 81.8. And they're looking incredible, and it really is a testament to the music program here in Lancaster. So we are looking forward to going to see them march in Syracuse at the end of the month at the New York State Field Band Competition.
Thank you, Mrs. Cohen.
Right, so to piggyback on Glenn's experience in the football game, a lot of you might know I like to, in my spare time, fundraise for the American Cancer Society all the time. I'm always asking people for money. And I worked with Eric Rupp to make this weekend's game a crucial catch game for the American Cancer Society, where half of all of the ticket sales were donated to cancer research, as well as we did a bucket pass with the cheerleaders in the stands. I was there with my mom selling T-shirts and rubber bracelets, and we were able to raise almost $5,000 just in one night, which was really, really incredible. It was amazing how generous people were. But in relation to that, I just want to say, I know we have amazing arts programs, music programs, sports programs, but I will say the character education and the kindness that people are taught was really evident. I don't think I've been around, you know, thousands of students like that in a long time, and every kid that came and bought a rubber bracelet from me said thank you. I'm not even kidding, probably all over 100 kids. My mom kept commenting, I can't believe they all say thank you. They have such good banners. And they were buying them for each other. They were, when they found out that the money was going to cancer, several of them came back for more. They like went to the parents, got more money, and came back. And then when we were packing up for the night, several teenagers asked if we needed help. A boy, probably a 17-year-old boy, brought the box of things to my van for me, didn't mind that he had to leave the game. He was like, sure, I'll help you, I'll do that. And it was truly amazing, because I have younger kids, they're in third and fourth grade and want to pre-K, and they talk about kindness all the time, and I know that it's a huge part of our curriculum and all the things that we're talking about, leadership and character development, and it was so evident with these middle school and high school kids, and it was just really amazing to see. So if anyone is watching this and is like, oh, the youth of today, go to a Lancaster event and talk to some of these kids, they were truly amazing. It was awesome to see.
All right, thank you all so much for those. And I think it's, you know, you all said some really great things, and I like that we're on local live. You just mentioned local live. Many of these events are streamed on local live as well. So if you are into the, you know, the girls volleyball team and the boys volleyball team are doing very, very well this year, so you can catch those games on local live. You can catch the football games on local live. And of course, you can watch all of us on local live, and it's pretty cool. We're pretty exciting up here. All right, let's go on to 9.0, the superintendent's administrative report.
I have a couple of things. And first of all, you know, Mr. Tellerico spoke about the open houses, but I would like to make a different comment about those open houses, that they were, by all accounts, in really great shape, all of those buildings. And it's a testament to the custodians and cleaners and buildings and grounds, and I'd like to thank them personally for all their hard work. They were in tip-top shape, and it's nice for families to walk in there and go into a brand-new, nice building. Now, we've had construction now for 10 consecutive years, about $10 to $15 million per year, and it puts a lot of stress and pressure on those individuals right at the beginning of September there, so thank you. Another thing, bus safety drills, our students, most of our students have fully participated in bus safety drills. Dedicated bus drivers reviewed safety crossing rules, exited for emergency exits, and identified danger zones. The bus drivers were fantastic in interacting with our students. I experienced them a couple of schools personally. It was great to see them, and I appreciate their dedication to our student safety. Our CCR coordinator, Bonnie Blatner, attended the first consortium of this kind in Erie One Bowcese with nearly 70 educators from across Western New York. The first meeting focused on establishing common language, exploring how bias impacts our organizations, and collaborating to share successes and obstacles that we take as we take this journey together. So proud of the Board of Education and this district for their courage and vision as we enter uncharted territory. Lancaster is one of only two school districts in Erie One to have a fully dedicated person whose role is to give students an opportunity to share their experiences. It has and will continue to help our district strive to create a culture in Lancaster that provides all students the opportunity to succeed, and I'd like to thank everyone. Finally, the emergency response plans have been distributed in accordance with regulations. The emergency response plans for each building were approved at the Board of Education meeting on 8/22. They've been submitted in New York State Accountability Portal, and they've been submitted to New York State's Safe Department. I'd like to thank Ron Rosler from the Town of Lancaster Emergency Management Department for his help, and all the local emergency responders, LPD, state police, sheriffs, and various fire departments here in Lancaster, not to mention the EMS groups as well. Finalized district plan is posted on the district website, and in December, if you know anyone that's interested in this topic, I would like to come to a Board of Education. Our safety team will do a pretty lengthy and comprehensive presentation on this topic, and I look forward to seeing that in the December board meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Valley. Moving on to old business, 10.0, does anyone have any old business to discuss? Moving on to old business, 10.0, does anyone have any old business to discuss? 11.0, new business, 11.1, personnel items, 11.1.1, can I have a motion on the personnel changes? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries? On to 11.2, 11.2.1, can I have a motion on the Committee on Special Education? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries? 11.2.2, can I have a motion on the Committee on Preschool Special Education? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries? 11.2.3, can I have a motion to appoint the Committee on Special Education chairpersons? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries? 12.0, business and financial items, 12.1, can I have a motion on the financial items? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries? 12.2, can I have a motion on the surplus equipment? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries? Can I have a motion on 12.3 for surplus textbooks? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries? 12.4, can I have a motion on the Food Service Monthly Reports for August 2022? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries? 12.5, can I have a motion on the construction change orders? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries? 12.6, can I have a motion on the DePew Police Department School Liaison Officer? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries? 12.7, can I have a motion on the donation acceptance for the Levite Foundation? For this one, you know, I really want to, you know, highlight, we talked a little bit about the music department a little bit earlier, not only do we have a national-class band, but we have the absolute best music program in all of the lands, so I really want to thank Mr. D'Angelo's and the entire music staff for all the amazing work they do in this arena, and congratulations to him on this. Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries? 12.8, can I have a motion on the Memorandum of Agreement with Carousel Nursery School? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries? 12.9, can I have a motion on the Erie County Bus Shuttle Request? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries? 12.10, can I have a motion on the Revised Corrective Action Plans? Does the Audit Committee have a recommendation?
Yeah, after meeting with Drescher and Malachi in the Audit Committee prior to the meeting, I do recommend that we move forward with the corrective action plans as we discussed.
Thank you, Mr. Calerico. Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries? 12.11, can I have a motion on the contract with James Welsh? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries? 12.12, can I have a motion on the contract with Christopher Tabor? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries? 12.13, can I have a motion on the contract with Jonathan Rizzo? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries? 12.14, can I have a motion on the OLBS Title I Agreement for Carol Castle? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries? 12.15, can I have a motion on the OLBS Title I Agreement for Christine Sudden? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries? And 12.16, can I have a motion on the OLBS Title I Agreement for Jennifer Wagner? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries? 13.0 is our public hearing. Any person who notified the district clerk per policy 1514 may speak at this time. Speakers must first be recognized by the president, then identify themselves by stating their name and address. The time limit to speak will be limited to five minutes per person. All right, public hearing, welcome to all who have come to observe this meeting this evening. This is a time we set aside for public hearing, a time when we invite members of the community to share ideas and concerns with us. We welcome this opportunity to hear from you. Again, each person will be given up to five minutes in which to address the board. This is a meeting held in public rather than a public meeting, which means we will not be engaging in any dialogue with members of the community this evening, but rest assured, we are listening carefully, and we take seriously what you have to say. I would like to ask you demonstrate respect for us and for one another by speaking to the issues, giving us ideas and sharing your opinions, but not engaging in any personal attack. Additionally, please know, as a public school district, we are bound by various laws, regulations, and policies regarding the privacy of students and staff, including the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act. Moreover, Board policy prohibits public comment on any topic directly or indirectly related to employee personnel information, or any topic that potentially may disclose information about a particular student. Accordingly, please do not comment on the performance or conduct of individual staff members and/or specific confidential student-related matters. This policy will be strictly enforced, and anyone violating the policy will be barred from addressing the board in the future. Thank you for your cooperation. All right, first, we have Tracy Chalino, did I say that correctly? Come on up.
I know the meetings start off on a positive note, however, we are here to share a story about a student athlete, an eighth grader at the middle school. This eighth grader tried out for the modified soccer team. This eighth grader participated for almost three weeks. Team pictures received her jersey. Day before the first game was dismissed, kicked off the team for seventh grade grade. Which brings me to mental health, COVID, and the transition that our middle schoolers went through. A year and a half, they were at home. They were at William Street when COVID happened, and then they were left at home for a year and a half, to be discharged from the middle school where things are very, very different. Many students struggle with the transition without COVID, let alone COVID adding to their mental health, their anxiety, their depression. This student was pulled aside right before practice in front of her team to not rejoin her team. This student athlete was left at school with no ride home, distraught. Her mental health, her well-being was never given any consideration. The policy states that the parents and the student will be notified in writing. Signups for fall take place in May. This allowed for the entire summer for the contact to the parents to be handled. It was never done. Not one person, not one administrator said, this student, let's check her grades now, let's see where she is, why don't we talk to the parents, what was going on at the end of last year? Because at the end of last year, those parents of that student athlete were in contact with the school about a tragic event that happened, and about her mental health, and none of that was even taken into consideration. Not one moral or ethical feeling or standard was even taken over by an administrator that said, oh, you know what, she's already been on the team for three weeks, practicing, getting her jersey, she's in the team pictures. We, as a school district, want to support and enrich our student athletes, not harm them. Not one person said that. It also states that if the team does not require a tryout period, the athlete can be permitted when he, not he or she, achieves satisfactory academic standing and obtains approval from the coach. The girls modified team this year turned out to be not a tryout team, every student made it, including a student that walked on the team without attending tryouts, and when we asked this student athlete how that happened, she said, well, she signed up. We are looking to you, the board, we have raised our child, and I'm sure, as the rest of you have raised your children, when you're wrong, you own it, and no one seems to want to own this. There has been lack of transparency through the appeal. The appeal states some administrator, some coach, somebody, we don't know, where did the meeting take place? We don't know, did the meeting take place? Was all the facts presented? We have no idea, lack of transparency, can't get a phone call, can't get a sit-down meeting. This is harming our student athletes. Mine's a little more personal to heart. To watch what this has done is inexcusable, absolutely inexcusable. You want to know, you talk about character, citizenship, leadership. On September 13th, this same student athlete's sports physical mysteriously went missing. She was told she could not participate in practice. This student said, well, I'm going to practice anyway, because it's for the good of my team, and ran lamps around the flats. I'm sure all of you have been to the flats, that's no easy task. But day after this student athlete was kicked off of her team, she went to that game to cheer on her teammates. Now, I don't know about you, but when I was thirteen, I would have been so embarrassed that I wouldn't have been able to do that, and she did that. Her teammates cried, her coach cried, her coach came up to her at the end of the game and said, just the fact that you're here proves everything I thought about you was right. That's character, that's citizenship, that's what you want in a student athlete at Lancaster Middle School, and that was taken away unfairly, unjustly, taken away. In conclusion, we support you and the grades. This student athlete's grades were the best when she was playing. Things happen, tragic events happen, mental health happens, and no one cares, so we are asking you to care and to make this wrong right, because it is destroying a thirteen-year-old student athlete at your school. This student came so far and worked so hard, her grades are in the nineties and a hundred, but that doesn't seem to matter, and we have watched this student athlete go backwards for over two weeks now, because we can't get anyone to make it right, and we're asking you to make it right. And I know I have a lot of other things written down, and I don't know, but your mission statement, your philosophy, and your belief statements in Lancaster Middle School belief statements are hypocritical to this situation right now. And I gave the details to Sandy, if anybody would like the real story. I don't have any notes to say.
Thank you, Mrs. Chalino. Am I saying that correctly?
Yes, Chalino.
Chalino, okay, thank you. And then, the second, we have Chris Chalino.
Just on top of that, this was completely avoidable. The policy, oh, I mean, the policies I've written, students are expected to follow policy for those consequences. The policy was not followed. If we had that written letter as the policy states, over the summer, we could have dealt with this, over the summer, before tryouts, before team pictures, before she practiced, before she was humiliated and embarrassed in front of all the students. None of this should have happened. We wouldn't be here today if the policy was followed. And Gianna has consequences when she breaks the rules or doesn't follow policy. And this, yeah, this set her up to fail. I mean, she worked hard over the summer with tutors, with counseling, she wanted to be better, she changed some of the friends that she was hanging out with, soccer was her motivation, and that was everything for her. And that was taken away with, nobody had a clue, she was blindsided, we were blindsided, there was no notice, we didn't get a phone call the day this happened, hey, this is what's going on, no, you're off the team. We're at work, we expect her to be there with the coach and her teammates to fight, no one cared, you're off the team, fend for yourself. And that's the bigger issue.
And then I'm sorry.
This was handled so poorly.
She was teased, taunted, and bullied after, they're all like, if you're such a good soccer player, why were you kicked off the team?
She's still being bullied and taunted to this day because of how publicly this happened, when it should have been, it should have been done before tryouts, she would have never had to be kicked off the team if our appeal didn't work, we could have gone through the process, which we have done. We read all the policies, we are following the rules, it doesn't matter.
And then Gianna said to us, after our Sierra phone call, after the incident happened, she said, all that work, everything I did was for nothing.
So that's our story, so appreciate the time.
Thank you, Mr. Chalino. And then, third, we have Kim Bacho.
I would actually like to defer my time to Gianna Chalino.
Well, I respect why you want to do that, unfortunately, based on our board policy, we can't do that tonight, but at any point, you know, someone could sign up for a given meeting by three o'clock on that meeting day. I respect that, I just, we can't do that for the board policy for this evening. But there's no age limit, you can come and speak at any age. Thank you all. 14.0 is an executive session. 14.0 is an executive session, so that effectively ends the meeting for this evening for the public. Before we go into executive session, we'll note that the next meeting is November 14th, 2022. That's a regular session, 7:00 PM at Central Avenue School. It's 149 Central Avenue. Can I have a motion to go into executive session? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. Thank you all for coming this evening.